Hey, all callers being ordered, please rise for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation followed.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every due justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials, grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens, amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Allen?
Here.
LaFleur?
Mistravich?
Here.
Reindell?
Here.
Ricks?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Motion to excuse Counselor LaFleur with notice of being out of town, will motion be in order?
motion.
Support.
Motion made and support, any discussion on that? Be or not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Approval of minutes for the city council meeting of November 20th, will motion be in order?
Motion.
Support.
Motion made and supported, is there any discussion on these minutes? Be or not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to audience comments, we do not have any audience, so I will not be going to the audience on each of our items for consideration unless somebody comes. Adoption of agenda, Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
City Council, any changes? Be or not, a motion to accept the agenda as presented, will be in order?
Motion.
Support.
Motion made and supported, any discussion? Be or not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion made in support for the consent agenda, there is no discussion on the motion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to our items for consideration this evening, we have six, the first one being consideration of approving Resolution 2023-17 Poverty Exemption Guidelines, Mr. City Manager.
City Council is scheduled to consider approving a resolution setting the 2024 Guidelines and Asset Level Test for Poverty Exemptions. Each year, the federal government establishes new poverty guidelines and state tax law requires that the local unit of government establish their guidelines for residents that are filing applications to be considered for a poverty exemption by the Board of Review. In addition to setting the poverty guidelines through the resolution, Assessment Administration Services, who the city contracts with to provide assessing services through Mitchell Elrod, utilizes a standard poverty policy guideline and application form for the residents and the Board of Review to utilize. So it's a little better form than what we currently use with some checklists and some more clear and concise language. Mitchell is here to answer any questions, but essentially throughout the years, we've been setting these poverty guidelines through resolution and we should be doing it every year, so. Mitchell's here to answer any questions.
Mitchell, you have anything to add to this at all?
Like John talked about, it's just a streamlined application, very clear checklist, so no one's forgetting anything. We don't have a lot of poverty applicants in the city that I've seen so far, and then the only thing that's new for 2024 is the Board of Review can grant a 75% reduction to your taxable value. Previously, it was 2550 or 100%, so.
Very good. Any questions, Mitchell? Is there a motion?
I make the motion to approve Resolution 2023-17, resolution establishing the poverty guidelines in relation to applications for real property, poverty exemptions for calendar 2024, and the 2024 Poverty Exemption Policy Guidelines, Guidelines and Applications.
Support.
Motion made in support, discussion? Do these guidelines go on our website for people? How do people get to know what our policy is on this?
I am almost positive there's a link on the assessor's page on the city's website. If not, we can definitely get that on there and put that, you know, on the front page or under resources somewhere.
I agree, I believe it is on our assessing website, yep.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion, comments? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number two is consideration of cost sharing agreement, Macomb County Department of Roads for 33-mile road, Mr. City Manager.
Okay, sorry for a little kind of history here and kind of discussion on this, but city council is scheduled to consider request a cost sharing agreement from Macomb County Department of Roads to pave 33-mile road. In October of 2022, the city manager, public service director, met with John Crum from the Macomb County Department of Roads and Mark Clua from MDOT to discuss the potential to use MDOT's small urban funding to pave 33-mile road. In 2001, that road went from being a gravel road to a paved road. The residents had come and asked us to look into that. At that time, the city and the county agreed that the city would pay 60% of the project and the county would pay 40% of the project to take it from a gravel to a paved road. At that time, the city's general fund paid for 30% of our 60, and we special assessed the residents and the developer for the other 30%. Once a road goes from gravel to paved, the county considers any future rehab of that road or reconstruction of that road differently than they do gravel roads. They don't assess, because it's a boundary road between the city and the township, they get the Act 51 funding for that and it's under their jurisdiction. As long as it remains a gravel road, they handle all the maintenance on it. Once it goes to a paved road, they do then assess the local governments for a cost share of any upkeep to that paved road. From what I've seen in other cost sharing agreements with other communities, that is the fact. Now, when we met with John Crum, unfortunately, we discussed a 50/50 cost share agreement with utilizing the federal small urban funds to cover the other portion. At that time, there was discussion from John Crum that the county would handle the engineering and the city would handle the inspections, and that would kind of be a wash. Unfortunately, since then, John Crum has left the Road Commission, and they continued down the path of putting all this project together and kind of changed the cost share agreement based on what they do with other communities for similar roads. Again, we had originally thought that this was going to be a 50/50 match of anything that the small urban fund didn't cover. We thought that estimate or the cost share for both the county and the city would be around 46,000, that's what our initial discussions with John Crum were. Once they got into kind of updating that quote for the project and looking at the engineering, they came back with an initial cost proposal that the city would pay 50%, the township would pay 25, and the county would pay 25, so a 50/50, but with the county's 50% being split between 25 county, 25 township. Unfortunately, and we made them aware of this when the county sent out that initial proposal, that in our discussions with John Crum and Mark from MDOT, the township was never part of those discussions. They had no interest in that road going from gravel to paved back when we originally paved it. We didn't anticipate that they would be in part of it when we went to repave it. They have a lot of gravel roads and don't, weren't a part of that initial project. As a result, initially, the county then just took the 25% and added it to the city and sent us a cost share agreement for 188,000. At that point, the public service director and I met with the county personnel, expressed our concerns on this was kind of changing from what we discussed. They reassessed, they had kind of been very conservative on their cost estimates for engineering and other services, so they adjusted those, and it went from 188,000 down to 136,000, but it was still at a 75% city cost share and 25% county cost share. Again, from our perspective, that wasn't what we had originally agreed to when we met with John Crum and Mark. Having said that, obviously, that person's no longer there to kind of talk about that with them. And certainly, if we don't utilize this small urban funding, there is the potential that at some point down the line, they go to do this project, and even if they only charge us 25%, it could be greater than what we're looking at now with being able to utilize the small urban funds. I don't have a great recommendation for you tonight. Again, we're kind of looking at either moving forward with the 75% or going back to the county and saying, hey, council has approved a 60% cost share based on what the original terms were in 2001 when we paved the road, or doing a 50%. Hey, we had agreed originally with John Crum to pay 50 and offer up the 50%. You know, I'm not sure how they will react, but I do know that based on our initial meetings with Irvin and Scott, I think we've taken it as far as we can with the administrative side. Beyond that, I think it will take the involvement of elected officials, either from the city or reaching out to Don Brown or others, and kind of going up the chain of command at the county. So with that, I'll kind of open it to questions for council, I'm sure you may have quite a few for us tonight.
Would council drop their rule on having a motion before discussion on this item?
Absolutely.
Everybody in agreement?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Okay, in our packet, we received two cost share agreements. I'm not seeing the difference between the agreement that has been sent to us for 33-mile road, other than the percentages. Powell Road was a 60/40, 60 for the townships, and Kelly Road in Frazier and Clinton was 50/50. How is it, we're getting 75/25? Is there any good answer to that?
There's not, in my opinion, there's not a great answer to that, other than the township said, hey, we weren't involved in any of these discussions and no one ever talked to us. We've never wanted that road to be paved and therefore, we're not participating. And so, instead of coming to the city and saying, hey, can we talk about splitting their 25, or we're going to take their 25 at the county level? They just lumped it with the city.
Yeah.
Is the best answer I can give.
Okay. It, I think you've already stated, I think we need to meet with our county commissioner and the road department to go over all of this. It doesn't make any sense that, you know, regardless of if that person is working there any longer or not, it was a 50/50 agreement, and now all of a sudden it's 75/25. Can't blame Richmond Township, they weren't part of the agreement, as you said, in the first place. So they get Richmond Township's Act 51 road money.
Correct.
It would seem to me it would be the other way around. No, you pick up their half.
And we expressed that, and certainly, I think at the level we're talking with, as far as their administrative staff, we tried to get them to understand that or to see our point of view on that, and they just wouldn't, you know.
But then I would still go back to, how is it that Powell Road just got done at 60/40?
I, I mean, that was my email back to them of, I've seen several, I asked for examples of cost sharing agreements, and all of the cost sharing agreements come in anywhere from 50 to 60 or 40 to 60% cost share.
Yeah, so if nothing else, we need to have an answer on that. Now, maybe the people that you dealt with administratively are limited to 75/25, and it's all, evidently, it's negotiable because it looks like in the same timeline, Kelly Road is at 50/50 and Powell Road is at 60/40. So there's, what's the rhyme or reason here?
Yeah.
So I think we need to postpone any motion tonight and meet with our representative to the county and with the Road Commission to find out, hey, you're putting quite a burden on us, especially since we budgeted for 50/50, having that in mind. Is there a timeline on this, do you know?
They're very anxious to get a response.
Why are they so anxious? They can't do it now anyhow, the plans are closed, right?
I think it has to do with timing on the funding, the federal funds and bidding the project, and they've obligated the funds, they're trying to determine if the project is going to go forward or not.
Uh huh, okay.
And again, I think, based on your comments, Mayor, I do think trying to get Don, you know, our elected official from our area to meet with us so that we can explain to him, here's, and again, a lot of things happened and different people have come and go, however...
We're still here.
We're still here, and our decisions were based on what that person told us.
Right, yeah.
You know, and like you said, certain times, I'm not sure other administrative staff has the authority to go and look at the bigger picture of, you know, hey, we all got here, there's a story behind it, not just formulas.
Right, yeah, yeah, yep. So, do we know the timeline? I mean, you say they're anxious, but is there January 1st? I mean, is it a fiscal year or a calendar year?
I don't actually know a firm deadline.
Okay.
And certainly, I would say as, your position, I think, just needs to be resolved and they have to wait, I think that's where we're at right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, the small urban funds are cyclical, so if we miss this funding cycle, we may leave that money on the table and it may be available in another couple of years.
Two years.
You know, now, I'm not saying that if we postpone this and that we're going to miss that timeline to utilize these funds, you know.
Yeah, I think we need some answers first before we make a final decision on how much we're going to, our portion is, you know, if it does change from that 50/50.
Yeah, we're talking, I just did some numbers, and I mean, at 75%, that's $90,000 more than if we paid 50%.
Right.
You know, it was a split thing. On the other hand, if it was a 60%, it's 108,000, almost $109,000, and they're looking for 136 from us right now.
Right.
So we're going to get $441,000 from the feds to do the road. 28,000 isn't going to make or break us, but 441, if we lost it, will, and the roads, the road is sinking. I went down it the other day during the day, and you can see where she literally's, I don't know what happened to the compaction in 20, or 2001, but...
It's just been water damage, I think. I've been asking the county to maintain that for a few years now, and they don't appear to be interested in maintaining it and obviously even in repaving it, you know.
Yeah.
As far as it's not, as the city manager mentioned, it's, they didn't want to pave it to begin with, so I just, my opinion is they don't see it as a primary road that needs to be paved, in their opinion, and I just think they're not interested in spending their available funds on it.
So it was said that, you know, once it turns to pavement, they no longer basically are totally responsible for the maintenance versus the stone road, whatever you want to call it.
Revel, yeah.
The dirt road. So, let's say out in the townships, such as School Section Road, if that needs to be redone, does Richmond Township have to pay into that?
You picked an interesting example because they're paving School Section this year, and it's 100% county.
Okay, so, you know, and I talked to John about that. I don't get it.
Yeah.
They say one thing and they do another, and, you know, there's a lot of tax money that are coming out of those people that were special assessed at their request, they were special assessed. How many homes are in there? They're all paying county taxes, and yet they want to stick it. I want to go, we need to talk to somebody else. I just don't see us, this is not a, this is not a good, this isn't good business. What's their policy? You know, the roads there, we paid 60% of it, the city taxpayer paid for, and now they will come back and make it 75%? Can we redo it? Doesn't make any sense to me.
Yeah, and like I said, when I tried to get examples, there was no one, one clear, here's the percentage that everyone pays.
Yeah, yeah, maybe somebody needs to look at their policies, you know, and maybe I'm wrong, but I don't, I can't imagine a policy like that that is split up in how many different ways, you know, if it's, if it's, I don't know. Any other conversation on this? Let's go back to our rules then, before any more discussion. I would make a motion that the administration meet with our elected official, Macomb County elected official, and the Macomb Department of Roads for further explanation and/or negotiation for the paving of 33-mile road. Sorry, I didn't put that in writing, but...
No, no. I...
I'll support that.
Okay, motion made and supported, discussion?
I do...
Go ahead, John.
And I don't mean to put work on the council. At the point we're at where we're kind of beyond administrative solutions here, in meeting with, you know, whether it's Commissioner Brown or anyone else, I do think it would be helpful to have a Richmond elected official there as well.
I'd be more than happy to meet with them. Is anybody else? So, if there's consensus, is it all right if I meet with them also?
Absolutely. Yeah, but I just, sometimes I think that can be helpful.
Okay. I did not add it to the motion, but I'd like to see us contact our commissioner immediately and see if we can get this done, if there is some kind of timeline, we don't want to lose the 441,000 from the feds, so if we can get something together real soon.
We can mail him tomorrow and look for his availability.
Good, good, and I'm pretty much available, other than the city.
Right, right.
You know, I'm pretty much open here, so anytime in the day. And I think after he sees our documents, he's going to wonder what is going on also. And we'll see, we'll find out, and hopefully, we can expedite one way or the other, then we'll have to make a decision based on what we come back with, and if we have to have a special meeting to get that accomplished, hopefully, we could do it on the, was it the 18th?
Yeah.
Is our next city council meeting before the end of the year? If we can get something accomplished before then, then, you know, if they're anxious, so are we. We want to, we want to know that that road's going to get fixed, that at a reasonable rate on for us taxpayers in Richmond, we should be treated at least like most of the other county here. So anyhow, is there any other discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Okay, we'll go on to item number three, is consideration of establishing a quarterly roundtable meeting date, Mr. City Manager.
The council is being asked to schedule its next quarterly roundtable meeting. Normally, we have roundtable meetings in January, April, July, and October. In January, we've been holding them on the same nights as a regular council meeting, we normally come together about 5:30 and then break for the regular, and then go back in if needed. I would just ask that January 3rd, due to the holidays, and it'd be very difficult to put a packet together for that meeting, so the 5th, January 15th, or the first meeting in February, if there's issues with the 15th.
Okay, is there a motion? Would anybody care to make a motion for January 15th?
I'll make a motion to schedule the special quarterly roundtable meeting of the city council for January 15th, 2014, at City Hall, beginning at 5:30 PM.
Support.
Motion made and supported, is there any discussion? Be or not? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number four is consideration of equipment purchase mini excavator, Mr. City Manager.
The fiscal year 2324 budget includes 140,000 for the purchase of a new cemetery backhoe. The backhoe is used for, to dig and backfill graves and clear path to the grave sites during winter burials. As we began reviewing backhoes for use in the cemetery, one, we have a limited amount of space in the barn, as far as the size of our barn out there at the cemetery, and it became apparent that we might need to think a little bit outside the box, and so the DPW and Jim did demo a couple of different mini excavators, as was brought up, I think, at one of the council meetings during the budget discussions, and after doing that, we think the mini excavator is the way to go, and then also have a trailer to transport it, as might be used elsewhere, not just in the cemetery. We recently demoed a mini excavator on the park drainage project that we just undertook, that would be similar to this, and then we would also, as part of that, recommend a trailer to haul it on, as I mentioned, and we may use it outside the cemetery. Both of those items would come to 111,447, which is still underneath what we had budgeted for. We would keep the existing backhoe, we use it rather than sell it, we'd keep it just in the short term. We do use it sometimes, as Jim mentioned, to plow away to the grave site. We normally use...
Backfilling.
Plow trucks, oh, and backfilling the graves once they're dug. The mini excavator isn't great for that. But again, the bid from AIS is part of the state contract that meets the bid requirements, and Jim is here to answer any questions in behalf.
Thank you. Anything to add to that, Jim?
Just to say that as a DPW, we have considered a mini excavator independent of the cemetery for a few years, we've kind of talked about fleet, and as part of the cemetery backhoe replacement, it's a little complicated as far as having a backup for our primary backhoe and just processes and stuff, but so we've very thoroughly evaluated, you know, our options. We did struggle to find a backhoe that would be utilized well in the cemetery as far as the size, in addition to storage of it. We were not able to find one we were happy with that would, that would meet that need there, and there are other cemeteries that utilize a mini, and we felt as a DPW that it would be best to purchase a mini. We believe it'll work very well in the cemetery, however, there's a benefit even outside of the cemetery, and the guys, again, we did demo it and it worked very well, we did demo it in the cemetery as well, and see no issues there. The intention would be to store it at DPW on the trailer, which will fit inside the new expansion of our, GPW barn is tall enough where we could keep it right on there, which would allow it to be very efficient to use, and again, we think it would be a great efficiency fit for our operations.
Just for clarification, the trailer, the letter from AIS says it's a MyDeal? It does not say that for the mini, is there...
They are, if it does, it's an oversight, but if it doesn't, I mean, but we did, I did confirm that. They actually said they're a, and maybe that's why it's, might say Sourcewell.
It does.
They are pre-qualified, or they are the awarded contractor for both MyDeal and Sourcewell. It really has to do with how the invoicing works, that they said it was better for the city and for AIS to utilize the Sourcewell. It's the same price, but just, it's a paperwork thing, but they're both a, you know, a municipal bid contract.
That's what Sourcewell is, I haven't noticed that before, so it's still basically the same thing as a MyDeal.
It is, it's exactly the same, and we have utilized Sourcewell in the past.
Okay, I just haven't noticed it in the past, okay. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make the motion to authorize the expense of 111,000.
I make the motion to authorize the expense of 111,447 57 cents for the purchase of a John Deere 50P mini excavator and a 16-foot Felling tilt deck trailer from AIS Equipment with the expense charged with appropriate line item within the equip, equipment acquisition fund.
Support.
Motion has been made and supported. Any discussion? Questions, comments? Are you getting three different buckets? 18, 30, and a 36?
Uh, it's possible we may not, uh, purchase the, one of the buckets, the 30-inch. The cemetery, it had to do with the cemetery, but we believe a 36 would, would work just as well for digging graves. We have all the options on there.
Anything else? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, he's here for more. Isn't that funny? Yeah.
Only time we see him.
Yeah. The thing is, we see him too often. Our next item, number five, is consideration of equipment repair for our 2003 Sterling dump truck. Mr. City Manager?
The city owns three dump trucks. All three trucks are fitted with, uh, belly blades and salt spreaders for winter maintenance operations. Uh, the oldest truck in the fleet, a 2003 Sterling, is primarily used for hauling spoils and aggregates, uh, but is the backup or a third truck for heavy snowstorms and, and winter maintenance. There's some issues with it and we've taken it to, uh, Marysville Truck and Trailer, uh, to get a cost estimate for doing the repairs that are needed. Unfortunately, with a truck like this and having to take it around to multiple different places for quotes, you're going to spend a lot of time and money as far as our own wages to drive it to different places. They've done, uh, a significant amount of work on the city's heavy equipment. We feel in, in the past have been responsive, performed quality work and have had competitive pricing, rather than spend a lot of resources to get multiple quotes. We are recommending that you waive purchasing ordinance requirements to allow Marysville Truck to do the work.
Very good. Is there a motion before discussion?
I'll make a motion to waive purchasing ordinance requirements due to section 64-53D and to authorize the expense of 16,500 for repairs to the city's 2003 Sterling dump truck by Marysville Truck with funds charged the appropriate line item, general fund, equipment, maintenance.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Discussion? It looks like quite a bit of work is going to get done. We got a new box on there, so-
It is, yeah, and cer, uh, certainly when we had, uh, made the request to purchase the new box, we knew that there, it's not a brand-new truck, that there would be some expenses. Uh, some of this is somewhat unexpected, but the majority of it is normal wear and tear, uh, and we, we did factor that in to the, the lifecycle costs and we still feel that's easily a benefit to the city if we make these repairs based on how much we use it. That truck should last quite a while and be signif, still be significantly less than purchasing a new truck, again, which we had evaluated a few years ago when we made the request for that new box, so. It is a good truck. It's perfect for hauling spoils and we keep it 100% ready for snow because we believe that we need three vehicles in the fleet to be as level of service we need for the community and to have a backup truck in, in the event one's down, so. Excuse me.
Well, it seems like a lot of work is going to get done for a very reasonable amount of money.
I did, I, I felt that way myself and we did talk to him. It is an estimate, he considers it to be somewhat conservative, so, uh, I do not expect it to be over that amount. It will not be over that amount.
Any other discussion, comments? Need a roll call vote?
Ms. Dravich?
Yes.
Raindell?
Yes.
Ricks?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Motion does pass. And, uh, we have our final item. Number six, consideration of equipment purchase, snow pusher box. Mr. City Manager?
Again, the fiscal year 2324 budget includes 14,000 for the purchase of a snow pusher box, or sometimes we refer to it as, as an avalanche. It's essentially a big plow with wings on it to keep the snow in front of it. Uh, helps with clearing parking lots, downtown cleanup, and a number of uses, cul-de-sacs. And so, uh, again, it was budgeted for, uh, Jim's gone out and, uh, looked at them, uh, and so, in doing so, DPW is not able to find other suppliers who made the pusher box for the John Deere High-Viz Quick Attachment, uh, that we're looking for, so that, um, due to that, uh, we are asking that you waive purchasing ordinance requirements, uh, due to there was, uh, competition was determined not to be adequate, or was determined to be inadequate.
Very good. You need to add to that, Jim?
Uh, no, just, just to clarify, the, the pusher box that we currently have, uh, it's been around a while. I mean, it's, uh, it's not, uh, very convenient as far as it goes on the end of the bucket. There was a picture, I believe, in your background.
Mm-hmm.
Where you, uh, by, this purchase will allow us to use the loader much more efficiently. It's safer, it brings it a lot closer to the loader, so it's not as much strain on the equipment. Uh, we, we do intend to keep the old one, at least for now, uh, because we, we need to utilize that pusher box with the backhoe when we do downtown cleanup. So, it'd be very limited that we would use that one and it will last, uh, for our needs, that limited need, but this would be a significant improvement. Allows us to more quickly attach on versus using chain binders and having to adjust it throughout the day. It's safety, somewhat of a safety factor in that, too, to go out and then still get back to the yard and use the, the loader for, you know, loading salt trucks quickly when we need to, stuff like that.
So, this, uh, for clarification, this is where you drop the bucket-
Comes right off.
On the front, the front-end loader?
Uh-huh.
And this attaches to the knuckle on the front-end loader? That's what this, what's it called?
The High-Viz Quick Attach.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that's what it is, okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to waive purchasing ordinance requirements due to section 64-53C and to authorize the expense of 11,330 dollars for the purchase of a 12-foot snow pusher box with quick attachment from AIS Equipment with funds charged to appropriate line item equipment acquisition.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Is there any discussion or comments on this? Hopefully you won't have to use it a lot this year.
I'm okay with that.
Roll call, please.
Raindell?
Yes.
Ricks?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Dravich?
Yes.
Motion does pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Hopefully we won't see you for a few months. Miscellaneous matters from the city managers, sir.
Uh, as you may have noticed in your mailboxes today, we, we did receive the city calendars for 2024. So, we encourage any resident, uh, to stop in the City Hall. Uh, I believe they'll also, uh, soon be available at the community center and library as well. So, uh, if you want your city calendar that has a lot of good information on the city, uh, including when trash is delayed and contact numbers for the city, all of that good stuff, they're available here. We are experiencing a little bit of an HVAC problem. Uh, we do have cost estimates for the replacement of a circulating pump for the hot water, uh, and a repair. Both are under 5,000. One is a little bit close, um, so as we talk and make the decision on whether to repair or replace, uh, we believe both will be under the 5,000 and we're able to do that. But if they go over 5,000, we'll certainly let council know of the emergency nature. Again, we're kind of bailing water right now and luckily it's a redundant, there, there's two pumps that work in tandem, so we're, we're still have heat at this point, um, and working very hard to get, get it fixed.
Very good, very good. Uh, council comments? Jim?
Nothing, no, Mayor.
Emily?
Nothing, thank you.
John?
Nothing.
Rob?
All I did know is the Christmas tree lights, there's like 13 lights out, but also there's almost 20 poles that are throughout town that are not lit.
Mm-hmm. We, when, uh, the DPW did drive town in the evening last week and we did submit a significant order for a lot of streetlights that they had noticed were out, including a few Christmas decorations, but quite a few streetlights themselves.
Yeah, and some of her combination of both, but I did, I took a count and it was like 13 of the lights, or the poles with decorations, so it's decorations are out and then, I think it was like 20 poles that weren't lit, which is quite a bit, I mean, considering.
Yeah, I wasn't, unfortunately, I was not aware of that, but we did enter them last week and generally they're pretty responsive this time of year, we can follow up with them.
Was that bank still out down here in the north end, on the east side of Maine? There was a whole-
There's a couple out there, yeah.
Just a couple now? Okay. They, they, I bet you they must have a short or something.
Yeah, there's more, seems to be more towards salt then.
Towards salt, yeah. Michael?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, well, um, let's, uh, congratulate the Richmond Police Officers Association for their Shop of the Hero this weekend. Um, it's been an annual thing for many, many years here in, uh, making Christmas better for a lot of local families and hats off to the RPOA on that. Also, uh, thanks to everybody that served on the Christmas Event Committee, uh, for Saturday. It was a phenomenal amount of people. It was a, uh, bigger parade this year again, more participation from businesses and individuals and families. I'm going to say there was a minimum of 2,000 people. As it was, it went all the way to the town clock from what I was told by the parade people. I couldn't see that far, but I know when I got up there to hand Santa the key and I looked at the south and, and I saw how many people were out there from that being up on the stage. And I turned around and looked, it was all the way as far back as I could see. It was, everybody, it was elbow to elbow. Uh, Main Street was packed, the sidewalks were packed. So, it's a great event, it's only gotten better and hats off to the, uh, the committee and, and, and everybody that worked to make it, uh, what it is. And, um, hopefully we can do it again next year. So, thanks to everybody there. Um, the library has a number of things going on. One of the things, uh, still going on is the mitten tree collection that will run until December 11th. Uh, they're collecting new gloves, mittens, scarves, and hats for both children and adults. They may be homemade or purchased. If you can, please drop those off at the library. Any questions? 727-2665. Also, their annual, 28th Annual Christmas Cookie Sale fundraiser is Fridays, December 8th. Uh, that runs from noon to 5:00 PM. Uh, you can drop off cookies if you care to donate on Thursday, December 7th, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Uh, again, any, uh, questions? That would be 727-2665. This is sponsored by the Friends of the Lois Wegner Memorial Library and all monies go to the Wegner Lot, Memorial Library. We also have a children's Christmas programs, uh, at the library. There'll be cookie decorating on Friday, December 15th, at 3:30. Christmas Storytime on Monday, December 18th, from 6:00 to 6:45. That's for ages 3 to 6. They'll have, uh, Christmas song stories and Ms. Richmond and her court will be there also and take home a craft. Again, that's at our library, 727-2665. And we have another one here, I don't know if there's anything else on here that I haven't mentioned, the cookie. Oh, there's, uh, uh, winter puzzle competitions will be Saturday, December 9th. That's, uh, a check-in at 10:00 AM and it'll start at 10:15. Again, that's in the library. That's December 9th. They'll have another one, January 6th, and another one, February 10th. All at 10:00 AM, that's $5 per team. Your team can consist of up to four people. They're 500-piece puzzles. I'd be there the whole week probably. Again, any questions on that? 727-2665. Is there anything else that we need to add to, uh, the, oh yeah, the calendar? Today being the 4th, we have a Recreation Board meeting tomorrow night at 7 o'clock right here at City Hall. The, uh, cookie sale, as we talked about, will be this Saturday, the 8th. The, a week from tonight, the library board, uh, will meet at 5:30 at the library. There is a Planning Commission meeting at 7 o'clock on the 14th. And two weeks from tonight will be our next regular scheduled city council meeting. Is there anything else that we need to add to the calendar?
The 8th is a Friday.
Pardon me?
The 8th is a Friday.
Yeah. What did I say, Saturday? I'm sorry, it's Friends of the Library Christmas Cookie Sale, 12 to 5.